Welcome to today's city council meeting. Today, Monday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, District one, Councilmember Casey.
Present.
District two, Councilmember Vera.
Present.
District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
District three, Vice Mayor Silvera. Mayor Lopez.
Here. And please stand for the invocation by Jim Stachow from the Harvest Perseveratarian Church, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. He is on Zoom today.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Lord, for the lovely city that we live in and for the people that we live and serve. We love our city, though sometimes we tend to disagree on how to improve it or how to address some of the issues. Help us tonight to listen to each other, to be quick to listen and slow to speak. Grant us your wisdom. Bless our council, our staff, and everyone participating tonight. We pray in Jesus's name, amen.
We have one presentation. If the council would please walk up to the podium with me. I was trying to catch everybody before they sat down. We have a National Fire Prevention Week proclamation. But Estelfire will be accepting the proclamation. This, this, excuse me. It's microphone. This proclamation is declaring October sixth through the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, as National Fire Protection Week, whereas the City of Series is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our state. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed more than two thousand seven hundred people in the United States in two thousand and twenty-two, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And the fire departments in the United States responded to three hundred and sixty thousand home fires. And whereas roughly three out of five fire deaths happened in homes with either no smoke alarms or with no working smoke alarms. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half. And whereas smoke alarms sense smokes well before you can, altering, excuse me, alerting you to the danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas the City of Series residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas the City of Series residents should test smoke alarms at least once a month. And where residents who have planned and participated, excuse me, practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas City of Series first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas the City of Series residents are responsive to the public education measures, are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the two thousand and twenty-four Fire Prevention, uh, Prevention Week theme, smoke alarms, make them work for you, serve to remind us the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. Therefore, I Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City of Series, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Brett Silvera, Councilmember James Casey, Rosalinda Elviera, and Daniel A. Martinez do hereby declare October sixth through the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, as National Fire Prevention Week in the City of Series.
Mayor, council members, thank you for this recognition and this proclamation. Fire safety is something that's an effective tool to reduce injury or death. And most of those deaths, as it mentioned, do take place in the home. And, and smoke detectors can be a valuable tool to prevent, to alert occupants and let them know to escape the home early. So we thank for, thank you for this recognition and to encourage all residents of Series to, and throughout the community, to take the time to check their smoke detectors, to make sure that they're working and plan what they will do with their family in the event of an emergency or fire in the home. Thank you.
We will now move on to citizens' communication. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopter rules allow no more than five minutes, Resolution two thousand and seven, one oh six, for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking any action in any matter which is not posted on the agenda, unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the City Council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber doors. We'll start with in-person comments with yellow cards. We have Lourdes Perez here. And she will just be discussing Saint Jude Parish Festival. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. As Mayor Javier mentioned, my name is Lourdes Perez, resident of Series. Both Joel and myself are here to invite you to our Saint Jude Parish Family Festival, taking place October fourth through the sixth, Friday through Sunday, at our parish facility. We're very excited to bring this to our community. We're hoping to bring families from surrounding communities. We have over two hundred ministry volunteers supporting this effort, and we're bringing lots of family activities. It's a family-oriented event that will have carnival rides, lots of cultural food, music, live bands, live music, live performances. We're very excited to bring this, as I mentioned. And we will have informational booths as well as VIP seating. So we would love to have our representatives there and offer you VIP seating if you wish. So thank you. I'll pass it on to Joel.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. My name is Joel, and I'm one of the coordinators as well for this festival. Just, you know, sharing with all the community members to really join us. It's a really fun event. I've lived here in Series for twenty-two years since I was born, and every year I've attended this festival. Right during COVID, it kind of slowed down a little bit. But this year, it's going to come back with great events and great musician performances. So we welcome all of you to join us. It's going to be a really fun event and for the whole entire family to join us for this event. So we'll see you October fourth through the sixth. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Did you guys leave flyers here at the community center? So anybody on their way out, if you want to grab some informational flyers, they will be in the front over here. Thank you very much for coming today. The next person we'll have is Ms. Reeves. And her topic is signal lights. Welcome.
Thank you. I was just wondering, have, uh, have they set the, or the new set of the signal light yet?
Could you be specific? Where exactly?
Well, you said it's a couple of the meetings ago that they were gonna reset some of the signal lights and get them better and timed. I'm just wondering if they've done that yet.
So the reset of the signal lights when there's issues like on the intersections? Is that correct? Sam, does that, uh, does that, do you recall any?
Mr. Mayor, I think you had to refer that to Mike. I think he was working with a consultant on the.
Okay. Sorry about that, Mike.
No problem. Thank you for your question. No, they have not been done yet. We're in the process of taking counts right now to, so that we can recalibrate. But that process probably will not be one hundred percent complete for another probably nine to twelve months.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate the question. And I also do have Justin here today from Juan Alanis's office.
Good afternoon, Series residents, Series City Council and staff. Justin Farkas, representing the Office of Assemblyman Juan Alanis. Sorry to be here with you folks and let you know about some of the success that the Assemblyman has had since, you know, overall during his first term, but just in these last couple of weeks. So I'm excited to announce that the Assemblyman has had his tenth, eleventh, and twelfth bills signed by the governor this week over his first term. Still waiting on another four to hear back on. Assuming all things go positively, we'll have sixteen bills passed by the governor within our first two years in office. So been incredibly successful passing some common sense policy here in the state of California, really giving back to our residents here and helping provide accessibility in a myriad of ways. So the three bills that we got passed this week, first is Assembly Bill nineteen oh two. That bill expands prescription drug label accessibility for those hard in sight and to the blind. Assembly Bill twenty-three, twenty-four helps address food insecurity for students, allowing for certain, certain produce to be donated to on-campus food partners. And Assembly Bill nineteen forty-six expands satellite facilities for horse race wagering, which is actually a really interesting one. We had a bill last year that was claimed to have saved the horse racing industry in California, which may not seem like a really big deal. But as we kind of took this bill on and have since passed this second bill on horse racism wagering, there's thousands and thousands of people in the state of California that are employed through the horse racing industry. And removing that industry, that sector of our economy would lose thousands of jobs across the state of California. So expanding that industry, allowing them to continue in their work, is continuing to build on our economy and create new jobs. And we're really proud of the work that the Assemblyman has done there. Like I said, still waiting on four more bills. You guys should be getting another update from us here soon. The Assembly, or the governor has until September thirtieth to pass any laws that he deems to be fitting for us California residents. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So we have no more yellow cards, but if we have anybody else in the audience that would like to come to the podium, please do so now. State your name. Seeing none, any hands raised on Zoom or emails?
There are no hands raised on Zoom, and there were no email.
We do have someone. You step up to the podium.
Good afternoon, Series City Council, Chief of Police, Mayor, Mayor Lopez. I'm Antonio Escobedo, and this is my wife Connie. We're the owners of the Doghouse Tap Room. We're here on Central Avenue. We're the new owners, purchased it in December, opened in January. We wanted to personally come introduce ourselves. We've been very busy with travel baseball with our child and other things going on that we haven't had time to formally come to one of these meetings. We wanted to come tonight, let you guys know about our establishment. And, you know, briefly, under our five-minute timeframe. We're a family-owned and operated establishment. I'm an honorably retired federal agent. My wife is the most outstanding real estate agent I've ever met in my life. And we do have active and retired military and law enforcement that volunteer their time and work with us as beer tenders on the weekends. So we run a clean, clean, safe establishment for you guys to come and enjoy. We have live music. We have DJs. You know, we, we close at eleven o'clock, so plenty, we, plenty of time to get home and get some rest. So, um, please feel free to come. We wanted to formally invite you guys this Friday to our ribbon-cutting ceremony we'll be having with the Atino Chamber of Commerce and the Series Chamber of Commerce this Friday at six o'clock. Please tell a friend, tell any Series residents to make their way to our tap room and enjoy some live music and some, some treats. And I wanted to touch basis on a concert that we're putting on here in Series. The Series Music Fest has been going around social media. And my wife and I are the ones that are funding this concert and putting this on at River Bluff Regional Park. Fun for all ages. We got musical performances from legendary groups that are going to be coming, making their way on Sunday, November tenth, Veterans Day weekend. I'm including the military services and branches for our event. We're going to do a special Veterans Day ceremony onstage. So you see that on social media, please share it. It's all fun for the City of Series and anyone else that wants to come, other cities that want to join us. It's like I said, it's going to be a family fun-filled day with music. We got a bunch of treats for all the Series residents who wanted to formally just invite you guys and let you guys know and put on record that Doghouse Tap Room is sponsoring that event. So we hope that each and every one of you guys can make it. Our Doghouse Tap Room also does lucha, lucha libre wrestling. That's been pretty popular here in Series. People have been writing us messages and stuff, saying they're enjoying it. So we do have that in our parking lot. The next one is October twelfth. Guys want to come by and see some lucha libre wrestling. It's pretty fun. It's fun for all ages. But thank you, guys, for listening to me and my beautiful wife. I have anything to say? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. Citizens' communication is now closed. Is there any conflicts of interest from the council? Seeing none. Before we go on to consent calendar, we'd like to announce that item number eight is being pulled by staff and will not be considered. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be acted upon by a roll call vote. Is there any council members that would like to pull an item? Rosalinda?
Thank you. Item four, six, seven, and nine.
Mr. Casey?
Aye.
Members of the audience? Then? Come back for a motion?
Make a motion to approve items one, two, and three of the consent calendar.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Uh, Rosalinda? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my question is on item four is regarding the Visa cards. There was no itemization like we've had in the past. And it looks like there's a thirty-three thousand dollar payment. So I just wanted to see if we can get an itemization or explanation as to what the thirty-three thousand dollars was used for. Um, that item should have been included in the agenda. So we do have it available. I'm not sure how it got missed, but I'm sorry about that. Can you, is there a way you can send it to me? Because I'm not, feel comfortable approving thirty-three thousand dollar, I don't, single itemized expense without knowing the documentation for it. Yeah, we can send that to you, but it would be tomorrow.
Can we, can we go ahead and bring that back? The next one, or you want to approve everything with the exception of that one bill? Ma'am?
That was the one thing that stood out to me. So I, I just don't feel comfortable approving a thirty-three thousand expense, thirty-three thousand dollar expense without an itemization or knowing that, you know, we don't have a new sports car in the parking.
Shannon, can we go, Shannon, can we go ahead and just bring the whole register back? Or do we need to move forward because some of the bills need to be paid?
Um, can you give me a minute and I can see if it's on Teams?
So we'll just, we'll come back to you. Rosa, would you like to go ahead and, uh, number six? Oh, I was just wanted to, if you want to go in order, that's fine with me, yes. Mr. Casey, go ahead. Number five.
Sure. Last, last meeting, we had the report of the city staff cleaning all their private property in front of the high school. I, I wonder what steps we've taken to be reimbursed? Or have we already been reimbursed for that expense? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Casey. I provided the, the cost estimate for both the city manager and the fire chief a while ago to follow up on the, our expenditure for, uh, for the two and a half days that we were out there. I'm not, I haven't followed up with the, the property owner or submitted their, you know, the cost of, of what, what it took staff time to, to do that.
Okay, and the, the other part of the same question is, did we, did we do process to do that? I mean, did we contact the property owner? And, I mean, I was the one that brought it up at a council meeting. And then it, it got cleaned up, and that's, that's good. But did, did we, as the city, do the due process of notifying the property owner, is his obligation? You know, all those steps before we went in there and cleaned up the property? Thank you.
Councilmember Casey, so the property owner believed that we were responsible for that. I got a phone call from a property management company asking if we wanted to continue to be taking responsibility, cleaning up, and making sure everything is proper. So the school district could park on there. I explained to them that we were no longer interested in that. They said they had made an agreement with this, you've a city manager, they weren't sure who. But that was, they, there was no problem with it cleaning up. They banked us and they told us to send us a, send them the bill and they'll pay for it. But they thought that was our responsibility to begin with.
You want, Rosie, you want to go for item number six?
Ma, Mayor, we do need to open up for public comment. So when, when we.
Then let's go back.
Back to, once we go back to four, we can open up for public.
We go back to four, correct. So let's open this to the public for item number five, please. Any members of the public would like to make a comment on item number five? Seeing none. Bring this item back.
Moved to number five.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. If I may, Mayor, we're going to bring up the, the report that was not included in the agenda. The clerk's office missed that on, putting that on the agenda. Um, and you'll see that it appears the thirty-three thousand dollar amount that Councilmember Vera is referencing is the grand total of the register. We'll put that up on the screen for the public and for council to see.
Did you scroll down?
Yeah, we're going to go to page two, and you can see down at the very bottom of page two, the grand total is thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents for the register of the date specified on the agenda.
Any members of the council need her to scroll up? Yes, just you may. Yeah, council member, you can ask questions.
I just saw under Julian, it said MacBook. So did we really purchase a MacBook? Or is that just software? I don't know the page numbers because again, it wasn't in our agenda, so I don't have an agenda. And you guys kind of went through it really quick, so I'm just trying to read.
It's part of his professional development funds.
Thank you. Yeah, it, I, it's kind of went faster than my brain. Read through it. Thank you. I have no further questions.
We'll take this item to the public. Any comments or questions? I can't see the Zoom with any hands raised. Are we clear there?
There are no hands raised on Zoom and no emails received.
Bring this item back to the council.
Moved to approve number four. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number six.
I guess I had a few concerns just about item six, just because it wasn't budgeted. I was told the department had some money. Um, I also wanted to confirm this was the best route, that they weren't smaller than what they already have, since it looked like they wanted something larger. And I just wanted to verify that this was a good use of funds. And I guess it's kind of up to us council, because we can't really talk outside of the chambers. When it comes to using money that's not budgeted. I guess those are kind of my questions and I think that was it for me. That was my only concern is just, not that they don't deserve it. I just know that we're cutting in every area, we're cutting public, you know, other areas, and I just want to make sure that we're making the right use and the right decisions.
Thank you for your question, council member. So while it wasn't budgeted in furnishings and furnishings, we do have the budget for it within various accounts within the engineering budget. As far as size goes, all the cubicles are actually getting bigger. Most of them are all ten by eight. Right now, we deal with some that are nine by eight, some that are eight by eight, some that are only six foot wide. So they're actually, everybody will be getting a bigger workspace. I think one of the big things with, with this is right now, we're running extension cords and things of that sort through makeshift ways in order to power computers and things of that sort at this point, which, which essentially could present, you know, a, a danger when you're running, when you're running extension cords. These will all be wired correctly. They'll be networked correctly. Everything, everything that goes with it. We're, we're actually getting a little bit of paint on the walls, which is, is helping out too. But really, when it comes down to it, you know, I, I think, you know, we, we've said it best, that our team members are, you know, well-deserving of something where the cubicles that we currently have actually aren't even full cubicles. They have desks that are in the cubicle space. And so it, it just becomes really inefficient for work layouts and things of that sort as, as you move through, uh, putting plans and all that kind of stuff together. So those are really the, the core reasons. I think the bigger one is that the electrical portion of it, you know, being run with extension cords is, is definitely not the way we should, we should have things being run as far as electrical there. And that'll all be corrected with, with this cubicle update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none. Bring this item back.
Moved to approve number six.
No, second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Casey.
Aye.
Council member Vera.
Yes.
Council member Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number seven.
Um, thank you, mayor. So, uh, my concern was reading through the contract. It looks like we cover all the utilities and expenses related to the, um, service that's going to be there over at the park, referring primarily to page 70, if you guys are looking at the agenda packet. But I didn't see that there was any maximum amount that we're obligated to. So in the event that they leave something on all night and the electricity bill goes on or they don't, you know, there's a water leak or something, we're going to, you know, they leave the water on, the dishwasher springs a leak. We're obligated for the utilities. So, um, I noticed there wasn't a maximum amount that we're obligated to each month when it comes to utilities or even a minimum amount of payment, um, that they would pay each month to us because it looked like it was just a percentage. But if there's certain months where there's not a lot of sales, um, technically that could mean that we're not getting a lot or if any payment received. So those were my concerns about that, um, contract that we see, uh, receive regarding, um, number seven.
So council member Vera, um, in our, in our past agreements, um, that has, um, never been a part of that. Um, so in the past agreements that we had with it, with the concessionary, it's always been a 70 15 split. Um, this time we went to an AD, AD 20, which would get revenues. And I think with this new contractor that we have coming in here, it's going to triple our amount of, um, sales. Um, it's going to be Wetzel Pretzel, um, that's coming in. He'll have his truck and then also, um, bringing in a concession stand as well.
I, yes, I did see the kind of, the items they're required to have as well. Um, my concern again was just that there's not a maximum amount in the event that there is an issue, especially with pretzels, having the heater, having the toasters on, having that amount of electricity and other things, and the fact that we're paying for all of that, that looked like that was part of the contract. So those were my concerns. Have we ever had an issue in the past where we're not breaking even on that?
Yeah, I'm not aware of that, but I can keep you posted. Um, I can check on the monthly bills and see how that comes out. And I will work with Sam and facilities with that and bring it back to you.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Any members of the public have any comments or questions on item number seven? Bring this item back.
Move to approve item number seven.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Casey.
Aye.
Council member Vera.
No.
Council member Martinez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Is your meat, is your-
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four one.
Sorry about that. Is this better? Item number nine.
Um, just going to item nine primarily, which is page 73 of the packet. Um, I kind of wanted to see, based on what we're paying versus what we received. So this last year we received 1.1 million dollars. Um, even though we paid almost the same. So I guess that's kind of my concern if this is something that may necessarily be something, an expense that we want to utilize because there are other contracts or grant writers, um, in the area. One that was referred to me by the series Unified School District Grant Writing Department, um, where they only charged by the grant they wrote, right? Because a lot of that federal and state official and promoting the city within the government, a lot of us are doing ourselves. Or as a council, we've been advocating for our own city, both federally and locally and at the state. We had Alanis here today, um, as an example, his office was here today, and I know we've kind of all been in contact with that office. Um, so that's why I was just wanted, uh, my concern was just the amount of money that we're spending, um, versus the amount of money that we're getting back. And it seems to kind of be a break even. And if that's something that I guess my concern is, um, again, my concern is really, I don't want to be losing money on something.
Yeah, I'm not really sure where you're saying that we're spending a million dollars writing a grant.
No, no, no. The annual contract, isn't it?
So our annual contract is basically $5700 a month, which comes out to about $68,888 a year. So far this year, we've got, we received $3,600 on bulletproof vest grant, $76,000 from Department of Energy for electric vehicles, $40,000 for San Joaquin Valley Air Protection Control District. And we just notified that we're receiving a $986,000 grant for the urban tree replanting grant, uh, which is about 1.1 million dollars return on investment for $68,000 or $67,880.
Don't forget about the request for the VFW, I mean, for the American Legion Hall.
And then part of the money that we're putting towards this, they're keeping us abreast of all the current bills and stuff. And so they've gone after a $2.000,000 um, hall renovation for the American Legion Memorial Hall. And they're back there actually hand delivering the letters and talking to the senators back there to get it moving forward. We're waiting until the federal government to finally pass a budget so they can keep moving forward. And so we're in the final stages of trying to get that approved or getting that approved. We're also getting ready to go out for a $250,000 cybersecurity grant. They've already contacted the people back there, uh, regarding that. And they say we're good candidates and, uh, can move forward with no match. And a lot of the places have to play a match. I think that their return on investment regarding this is a lot better because they're actually back there talking to the individuals, um, that are actually making the decisions.
I understand that. Um, but I, but from what I'm hearing and what you just stated, we only received the 1.1 million. The other items that he had mentioned about the hall renovations and stuff hasn't been guaranteed, correct? That hasn't been granted?
Correct.
Okay. So those are still just discussions or things on a wish list, correct?
Those, those, they're, they're pending right now, uh, waiting for the, we got federal government that is, uh, the cybersecurity grant is also pending. So all the other ones are pending. We've received so far, uh, in our one year that they've been involved with this, 1.1 million.
Okay. And then the 68, we also pay per grant, I believe in per page from what I read in the contract. So the 68 is just the flat fee. And then if they write the grant, there's additional cost to that. So our cost this year has exceeded the 68,000, correct?
It depends on which, uh, department, but yes.
Okay. And then that's kind of where I was kind of going at it. Our total expenses is not just 68,000 per year. Each time they write a grant, each page they write part of that grant, each, anything and everything they do, there's an additional cost. So it's not just $68,000 a year. And that's why, I mean, we're, are, how much are we really making off of this? For this 1.1 million, we've spent significantly or somewhat more than the 68,000 that you're quoting me.
True, but we're nowhere close to 1.1 million dollars.
Okay. All right. And you still feel that it's going to be something that's going to be beneficial and we're not going to? Because that's my biggest concern. I just don't want to have an expense and not see anything in return that's not benefiting the city, city, especially at over, you know, close to 70, I'm going to go with 70,000, $75,000 a year with the, you know, additional grants and other pages they've written. Um, I just want to make sure we're utilizing the tax dollars accordingly.
I think it was actually well spent money. I mean, especially if we do get to 2.2 and all the other grants we're going after, um, it, I, I think it'd be more, more than money well spent on going after the grants.
Again, we're in a recession. So, I mean, I, I, when you are slowing of the economy, we've seen businesses closing, whatever you want to word that. Um, but even we've seen the budget cut. So that's what, when you say, oh, well, we're waiting for a budget. Well, the budget has been cut. Across the state and the federal. So I just don't know how much of those grants that we can rely on and include that in the future.
Well, the one, the 2.2 has already been submitted. That's, uh, uh, a bit too much. This, uh, the cybersecurity grant is coming out of, uh, IT and they have the money to cover it. They, they have to make sure they have the money to cover it, but that's part of going after their specific grants. And the lobbying that they do back for us and back in Washington DC.
And then this was also budgeted?
Yes.
The full amount, including the grant writing part of it?
67,880, I think it is theirs. Yes.
Okay. And then anything over that is coming out of the department's budgets?
Depending on which department uses a grant, they pay for it, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Any members of the public have any comments or questions? Mr. Warren?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I couldn't hear a lot of that conversation in the back, okay? And I know that there are some extra costs other than the monthly, um, 5,000, whatever it is, um, for the grant writer back in Washington and the total bill for the year, $68,880. When it's all said and done, and all the expenses have been paid for the extra things that go along with the grant writers for this year, how much more will the city pay above the $68,880? What will be the total bill?
We cannot answer that because we don't know what grants we're going to be going after. So it depends on the grant that's going to be offered by the government. It depends on how much money we're going to be spending.
So it's hard for the council to make a decision when they don't know how much money is going to be spent. I know when I came down the other night and, um, Mr. Duarte was speaking, that 2.2 million is probably not going to come to fruition, going to be less than that, according to his comments that he made in front of the entire audience. He said probably a million or less. So we don't know how much money we're going to be receiving, but yet we're paying for something that we don't know what we're going to get. Maybe we should consider using someone else. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Anybody else? Okay, I'll bring this item back.
Move to approve item number nine of the calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Casey.
No.
Council member Vera.
No.
Council member Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries three two.
Any council member referrals? I have no reports. City Council? Oh, oh, it's a Christmas tree in here. A Christmas tree lit up. I'm going to go left to right. Daniel Martinez, you are first, my friend.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to, uh, build off of what Chief Hunter had mentioned, uh, that smoke detectors will be provided by, uh, Modesto Fire. They have a partnership with the American Red Cross. Well, they will, uh, install smoke detectors for free for people that need them. And if you, uh, wish to contact this free service, you can contact the Fire Prevention Division and their phone number is 209-571-5553. Or you can stop by any of your local fire stations and request this as well. Uh, that's all.
Thank you, council member. Council member Rose Linda and Vera.
Brett.
No, his did not light up.
Okay, just, I know he's, all right. So a couple of announcements this weekend is the Out of the Darkness Walk. Uh, it'll be over at MJC on Saturday, starting at 10 AM. Um, it's in the event to bring light to suicide and mental health as well as preventing future, um, suicide and, you know, let people know that, you know, if you ha- need help or want help, help is available. Um, they have the Olympia Festival this weekend over at Costa Fields. It's free admission. So definitely look into something like that if you're interested and you enjoy, um, just outside activities. Looks like we're going to have another great weekend of great weather. Um, definitely not fall like. And the senior prom is this Thursday here at the community center. Um, so we're definitely looking for volunteers to help serve and those willing to help with the dancing and line dancing, especially if you're good at it. We'd definitely like to see some dancers out there. Um, if you are a senior, please know it was a free event. I, assuming there may or may not be Joey, probably help me out if there's still late registration available.
Um, I believe all the registration is full.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I look forward to seeing everyone there this Thursday. Um, you do not have to bring a partner, so please don't think you have to bring a partner. I will be accompanied by my mother. Um, the SHA, we have the homeless, Densel County, a homeless alliance. We're working at trying to bring some options. The county is currently working with our police chief and trying to bring the street team, street crimes team unit back using county and state funding. Um, they're also working with the county affordable housing, um, regarding trying to bring an affordable housing units here in series that may or may not already be in process or in discussion as well. So those two things were the main highlights of our discussion at the homeless alliance meeting. And when it comes to education, the Department of Ag at Modesto Junior College will be hosting a family open house on Thursday, October 3rd, um, uh, 6 PM. So those of you who are interested in the ag department, maybe you want to come out and actually see our dorms. We do have 28 students that live on campus, on west campus that take care of our farm animals and our different agricultural units, such as watering the plants, taking care of the horses, chickens, because they still need to be taken care of on weekends and holidays. Um, this weekend, we also had the Kabadi event. This weekend, we had approximately 4,000 people that came into series. We had people as far as New York and Seattle that actually came and stayed. There was no issues, well, at least when I, I was there from almost, I was there before it even started and I was there at the very end with, until the traffic cleared out. So I was safe to get onto the street because 4,000 people leaving River Bluff is definitely, it flowed very well and the police, I appreciate them going out there and making sure everyone got out without issues. So that was a great event. Um, and then you may have seen, I know the conversation came up earlier. There are some monitors that have been installed now on some of the poles and out in the communities. You may see these cameras or monitor while our traffic engineering is, you know, monitoring the traffic and doing counts. So I've seen a couple of, actually quite a few of them around the schools and some main areas such as Pine Street, Sinclair. Um, I think every single high school now has one of those monitors on a pole somewhere or a stop sign. Um, you may see, you may not realize it. I just happened to be out there when they were putting the pole up and it kind of like, what is he doing on my pole? And I immediately reached out to McCann, Officer McCann, and said, is this normal? Should he be on a pole? Because usually people should not be climbing our city poles. Um, and so I just wanted, that's the only reason why I happened to actually realize that was what was going on. So those are, it sounds like from talking of, um, Beltran, those are actually be in place for probably up to six months to a year. So, um, they are monitoring the traffic as well to try to make sure all our lights and traffic flows a little, a lot better than what it is now. And those are all my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Casey?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I hope this is not a conflict of interest, but I've been a member of St. Jude's Parish for 51 years and I encourage everyone to go to that festival. Uh, it's, it's, it brings a lot of different people and it's a good community event. Also, uh, I want to report, uh, I brought this up a couple of times to be a resolution. And here it is, the end of September, and we haven't moved forward with it, reviewing our budget. Uh, if you look at the budget from 2023 to 24 and compare it to the budget when I came in at the halfway through, where the city council is spending over nearly $70,000 more a year than we did back then. There's not much that we can do about it at this point. However, uh, the insurance, it renews July the first, and I think that that's a very, a very large part of the, uh, budget for the city council. Uh, this is not a resolution. It's just something for the five of us to think about. Uh, we, we have not had the public hearing, public meeting to review the budget. Uh, going forward, it's already going to be October. I gue- I'm guessing that we probably won't have it at all. Uh, but I would like just to report that, uh, you know, insurance is a large part of that, uh, of our budget and as, uh, I think it should be removed. Uh, again, I, I brought up things before trying to make it a resolution. It didn't go anywhere. I'd just like, uh, everyone to think about it, talk to the staff, see if we can have that public meeting to go over the budget. There's certainly a lot of different things that we possibly could do away with. Uh, you know, here at our budget, we, the increase is 37,000 in insurance, 13,000 in travel, $8,100 in training, $40,000 in contracting, $6,000 in personal development. That we're paying more this year budget than we did in the 2021. Uh, I, I, that's a report. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember. Moving on to city managers?
I have nothing to report, sir.
Any of our departments? No? Did I skip the se- oh, city attorney? I do you have something to report?
I have no reports. Nightmare.
Okay.
Thank you for checking.
Um, county supervisor, is he online? Nope. Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. We will now adjourn this meeting and go to closed session. Our conference with legal counsel regarding anticipation litigation. California Government Code five four nine five six point nine for the one potential case. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak regarding the closed session? After closed session, we'll return the report out. God bless everyone.
Welcome back everyone, no reportable action. Good night.